You guys get that voice? This video recorded? All right, so you're warned, don't say anything. You don't want the rest of the world to hear. So we're looking at the new economics, chapter three, which is about systems. And Deming says the aim of this chapter is to get an appreciation for a system because it's an important element of the next chapter, which is a system of profound knowledge and it's a it's an integral element of a system of profound knowledge. So it's important to be able to go at that. So how about the idea of systems and the inner? Not just not just interconnected, but they're 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 interdependent. Meaning what goes on in one place affects what goes on in another. And what's going on in that other place affects what's going on in that place? So that's it's a special relationship that systems have that other kinds of things may not have.
I I ended up taking a detour off into Russell Aikoff's work because of this chapter. And ended up not finishing all the reading because of that. I've been off on this like Aikoff tangent now for days. So.
Russ, Russ has, Russ has something where he takes. He takes systems and he has four kinds of systems. So there's a, there's a mechanical system, a single minded system, a multi-minded system. So that's a person and that's groups. And then there's a, if you will, an ecological system like a barrier reef. And he goes through the characteristics of each one and how they're different.
That sounds, that sounds really interesting.
It is. I can send that out.
Okay, thank you.
The interesting thing too is he says it's not wrong when your car breaks down to treat it like a mechanical system. But if your organization breaks down, treating it like a mechanical system is the wrong thing to do. It's not a mechanical system. It's a multi-minded system and you have to treat it that way.
Is it multi-minded or multi-emotional, multi-psychological?
Is it, is it mind made up of all those parts?
Yeah.
In a system themselves?
Yeah, usually the most delicate part of that is the emotional part of it.
The example I remember is he's, I think, I think this is Russ's example. Maybe I figured it out on my own. But you, you can decide to drive your Porsche into a wall at 90 miles an hour. Because it's only your mind and it's a mechanical system and you handle mechanical systems through domination. Now, if you're on a horse and want to ride through a wall, the horse has something to say about it. You might get close to the wall and find out that you're not on the horse anymore. So that's a multi-minded system.
Is the, is the driving a Tesla into a wall? That a multi-minded system?
Yeah.
If self-driving is turned on, yes.
Hey, I have a question. I haven't kind of, I've not, not been wrestling with this concept for a while now. Is there a clear distinction between a system and a network?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact definition, but one of the things in a network is and the word is the same in Portuguese, you know, a hammock?
Yeah.
In Portuguese, it's hedgy. And it's hedgy because it's, 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 it's knitted. So all these pieces get, you know, woven together.
Yeah.
So it's pieces woven together. A network is, is like a basketball net. It's a net. It's not, it's not a system. I mean, you call it a system when, when it interacts with the other things on, you know, like the, like the the, the, the brim that it's hanging on and the backboard and all that. But that net is, I mean, you can call it a system, but it's a network and it's, it's different. When you, when you look at Deming's system, a system, production viewed as a system. It's, it's a flow chart. But it's not a network. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's not, and everything characteristic about networks like the internet is when one node goes down, it can reroute and use another node and keep going in a system.
Yeah, that's kind of where I.
You can't rewrite or reroute anything and keep going.
Right. So the, the inherent quality of the emerging quality of a network doesn't go away if it loses some of its parts. Whereas with a system, the emergent quality of the system goes away completely of one of the parts missing.
Well, I guess I, I'd argue that that depends on how your system is constructed. Whether, whether it has the property, right? Whether it has been designed intentionally with the property of recovery, right? The human brain can recover from all sorts of weird failures like a stroke, right? You can, you can recover from that and you don't necessarily die, right? And that's just your system having redundancy to deal with the failure of parts, right? It, so if your system isn't designed with resiliency, then, then it will fail if any part fails, but right? So that the, the internet is just, was just designed with resiliency in mind. That's all, right? It was intentional to have it have that property.
So would you say that then a, a network is a subset of a system or is?
I, I think I'd, I'd say they have, right? I'd say that there's a, there's a, some sort of relationship between them that way. I am, I guess the internet is a, is a system that was designed with these properties, right? It is not a simple, just like, oh, these two or three things are connected to each other with wires. Although in the early days, that is essentially what it was.
Yeah, the, the, and another idea that we need to remember with a system is the universe doesn't have any boundaries. So everything within the universe, when you put boundaries around it and look at it, whether it's a galaxy or whether it's a solar system or whether it's the earth-moon relationship is a subsystem. So we're looking at subsystems everywhere. And Deming reminds us that because the boundary for every subsystem that you're looking at is in your head, you can change it to suit your needs. And he points out that you might need to narrow your focus. And so eliminate some things from your current system view to take some action. And then you could go back and enlarge it later if you need to, or put it back where it was. But the, the, the boundary is not a physical thing. It's not part of physics. It doesn't really exist except in your mind. So you can mess with it. And he points out that the larger the system, the more difficult it is to manage, but the more power can be generated because of it.
Isn't that kind of tied to the, the aim of the system? Because if you say the system that I want to define has this specific aim, it doesn't serve you well to keep expanding the boundary just to have more capability. If, if those additional capabilities don't address the aim that you intended when you threw the first boundary.
Yeah, changing the boundaries may change the aim of the system. I know the Peker Services guys have, have changed their boundaries to bring on some stuff they didn't do in the early days. And, and it changed their aim some. But the, the aim, the aim ought to be ought to be, you want to be careful about being too narrow. If your aim is to build carburetors, you're going to have a problem eventually. So, so you want to watch on the narrowness of your aim. But you want to be willing to change the boundaries. And Peker, I know when, when a new idea comes up for something, they might want to dip their stick into and try. The first thing they do is go back and review it with their aim and ask the question, does this fit our aim? And if the answer is yes, then the next question is, do we think it's a good, what do we need to do to decide whether it's a good idea to go, you know, go ahead with this? If it doesn't fit our aim, the question is, do we want it to fit our aim? And do we want to change our aim to include that? So it's a, it's, they don't, I don't, I don't know if they.
You're right, the aim and the boundary of the system are not rigid things. They, they have.
Right. They, that, right. All of, all the pieces are dynamic, right? Yeah. Right. The, 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 one of the, one of the, I guess, the nice design ideas of the internet or ARPANET at the time was the idea that you could just attach additional nodes. And then as long as they talk to the, right? Whatever you made, as long as it talked the core fundamental protocols, it would, it could interact with other things on the system. And then you had the option then of creating entirely new protocols for talking to each other, right? So they're right. And we have piles of different ones, although it seems like everything settled on HTTP finally.
Yeah, I think the characteristic Deming's poking at is when he talks about appreciation for a system is recognize that things are connected to each other and they're connected in a, in a way that involves interdependency, meaning what's going on in one place affects what's going on somewhere else. What your heart and lungs are doing depends on what your muscles and brain are doing. So and, and what your brain is doing depends on what your muscles and heart are doing. So it's all, all active.
Have the Peker folks written any or done discussions or talks about how they, how they make decisions about when to increase these scope of their system?
I've seen both Dick Steele and, and now Ian Bradbury give presentations at Deming conferences on, on some things.
I'm curious about how those decisions, like how, how you, like concretely how you like make those kinds of judgments.
Dick Steele also leads a monthly discussion that anybody can join.
Yeah, it's a, it's kind of like. It's a book review thing. They, they pick a book and read it and discuss it.
Dirk, if you have details about that, can you chuck it into the chat?
Okay, I can try. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's Wednesdays. I forget.
Yeah.
And that, 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 an important thing to remember about the system is that it's not about the pieces individually. Russ Aikoff offers that the performance of a system is not the sum of the parts. In fact, it's not a sum addition. It's the product, a multiplication of their interactions. So all the leverage in managing a system is in working on the interactions. And in fact, working on the pieces separately and trying to make each of the pieces better may destroy the system. Deming's got some examples in this chapter on destroying a system.
I think we've all lived in organizations where local optimization or improving one component can really upset the system. Classic red ten behavior.
Well, yeah, yeah, no, no kidding.
Yes, like they, 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 they decided that, that the paper that they were, were using was more expensive than it needed to be and they could buy thinner paper. What they discovered is the thinner paper jammed up a whole bunch of the copiers, a bunch of the time. And so as a result, they saved a lot of money in paper and spent a lot of money and, and spent a lot of engineers' times on jamming, on jamming paper, paper printer, printer paper from the printers so they could print what they wanted to read. So they went back to the old paper eventually.
I, I liked what Bill Bellows was telling a story on the Deming Institute podcast about what the, the thicker paper that was used in the binders and then them it being switched to a thinner, lighter weight paper and then the binders coming apart because the poles would break. And having to like buy whole reinforcement, like stickers, right? It was insanity. It was, it was very entertaining though.
You're going to talk about the copy machine that ended up in the parking lot.
Oh, in, in.
Company took a forklift and ran it through the copy machine and took it out to the parking lot and told the company to come get it. It's a, it jammed consistently. It was a story about a big proposal, important proposal that they needed to get out and they couldn't do it because the copier jammed up. It was supposed to be the greatest copier at that time. Can you hear me okay now, Scott?
We can hear you better, that's for sure.
Yeah, sorry. I was leaning back a little bit earlier.
Yep, thank you, Yoshio.
So what else about systems emerges from this that you think is worthy of acknowledgement or conversation or might need explanation?
I have a question. And it's related to what we first started talking about in the concept of interdependent. And I'm no expert on interdependent versus dependent versus independent. But Bill Bellows has talked about it a few times. And the idea in my mind, my mental model of independent, no interaction, dependent could be characterized as one-way flow from one piece of the system to another. And interdependent is information flowing back and forth, not just one way. I'm not saying that's right or, but with that idea, I'm, in rereading this, I looked at the figure six production viewed as a system. And all the arrows are in one direction. And to me, that does not have a feel of interdependent, but has a feel of dependent. And maybe I'm simplifying it, maybe my mental model of those terms is wrong. But that caught my eye that those arrows are all one way. There's not back and forth.
There, I think there's a close loop, Dirk. I think that consumers drive consumer research that drives design and redesign.
He, he. In the big picture and the whole thing, there's a PDCA or PDSA. But from piece to piece is their communication.
Yeah.
He talks about that. He talks about, he talks about the diagram as being a flow. So he's got arrows on it to show the typical direction of the flow. But he also talks about the fact that the pieces depend on each other. And that it's the flow, not only of the product, because it's for product, but of the information that you need in order to manufacture the product or do whatever analysis. And that, that, that flow is, is important to recognize. And, and it's important to recognize the system. That's the, that's the mistake we sometimes make, I know, in organizations is we have a problem in production. And so when we're looking for causes, we're looking within the boundaries of production. What caused it? But it could have been caused somewhere way away from production. And if we don't appreciate a system, we'll spend all our time focused on the area where the, where the, where the symptoms showed up. It's, it's, it's kind of like, it's, it's kind of like feeling your wrist and noticing the pulses, you know, 180 and saying, oh my God, what's the matter with my wrist? Nothing's wrong with your wrist, but something's wrong with your body because your pulse is 180. So that it's, that's part of appreciation for a system. Recognizing that, that wherever you see a result and you want to examine what might be creating that particular result, you, you, you can't just be looking right next just down, just upstream of what happened. You've got to start looking. What are the things that could generate that in that locale at that time?
I mean, in a healthy company, there's arrows, there's little, any current throughout this entire, you know, left to right arrows, this arrow.
Like, like, does it not have the back pointing arrows? Because there have just been so many arrows, you couldn't follow what was going on?
I think. How they need that production.
Yes, could have. We could have lost the essential meaning with a scatter diagram, just arrows all over the place.
Yeah.
I, I don't believe I've ever seen it done, but he mentions you could put names next to each, each of the nodes that he identifies. And you, and you'd be much better off than having the, the hierarchical management, who reports to who.
I just posted a link if somebody's in, because I thought this was interesting because I'm also right, working on programs and projects that are temporary within these systems, right? You got project program teams and then which organizations are more static, program teams. So I found this, it was actually a link from a summary of the Deming chapter, but they have this thing called organigrafts. I posted the link in there, but it's interesting because Dirk, you mentioned it. There's like different ways to depict it. There's like, in this article, it was like a one pager, but they showed examples like web diagrams and different ways. And I know we were talking about nodes and nodes doesn't quite fit, especially with the word network. It sounds very more mechanical. But I like the word webs and we talk about chains because web sounds a bit more organic. But anyway, I posted it there.
Have you ever, have you ever encountered Ted Nelson's work on zigzag? Which was a data structure that he developed for representing multiple link chains where the, where it's like in one, one dimension, it links one set of ways. And in a different dimension, like say time, it links one set of ways. And so you have another dimension of relationship. It creates a different graph from the, from the, from that. It, I, I felt like these two things have, there's some kind of parallel there, but I'm not sure.
And I haven't heard, but it sounds.
I'll see if I can find you, I'll find you a work.
In reality, there's all these multiple, what you're describing, and I think about it. We talked about the org, like the body and the systems, like there's multiple layers or levels, right? Or, or what Tim was saying about where you let the boundary, because ultimately where even within a body system, like you could have so many infinite, infinite or right, like the circuits of the nerves is different and even like fascinating when you just see it, you know? But anyway, you got to pick somewhere to depict, right? And it's a limited article. But I posted that for like how you organize communication and responsibility, I guess, right? But depends when you're passing information or you're trying to say, well, who's really responsible for handing off X? Um, yeah, anyway, I'll stop there.
These are, these are very complicated problems, right? And it, and at some level, like the, it feels like often the tools we have available currently are not really suited to, to like representing these things. Like wikis give you some parts of it, but they, they're lacking in many ways, right? And, and this has just been the challenge of the last several decades, it feels like.
Well, and I think it's part of what language itself, words, right? You, a word is a limited thing. And then it's really what the web, the, the interconnection, the interdependencies between the words. You know what they say, read between the lines. And it's like, I was talking to Bill Bellows recently because I have a call with him periodically. And, you know, I, I always learn a lot from talking with you all. But it was like, that's where the real kind of power and communication is. Otherwise you get this very linear, I might have mentioned this on the past call and I struggle. But I think it's fascinating to get into language and like it's each word by itself is a symbol in a way, and it has more many meanings. But then you put them together and then there's other meanings. And then it's like, it's, and that's where we get, I think, is we assume that there's a, it's a thick static thing, right? It just the language.
Well, right. Are you familiar with CP Snow's work on the two cultures? So have you encountered that? Okay. So CP Snow was a physicist and fiction author in the like thirty, for thirties through fifth seventies or something, right? So he gave this talk called the two cultures where he posits that one of the challenges we have is that essentially scientists and the, the science community and the humanities community are speaking two different languages essentially. And you can't, and it is very hard for these two groups to communicate with each other effectively because they are essentially speaking, yes, they're both speaking English, but the English that they are speaking is not the same. Um, and, and he breaks this down over like, and gives a bunch of examples and talks about sort of this problem. Um, and that's been a, like a, a core level fundamental thing for my view into like sort of working with people. And in the sciences, it's not even like, you know, biologists and chemists are closer than biologists and, you know, electrical engineers. And their language is also different and it's so it getting these, getting together so that you can have a collective understanding of a problem so that you can do something is challenging. Right? And that's the, the sort of fundamental challenge we have is gaining that as an organization, a collective understanding. Ever, I've written my own essay on that topic. So.
Yeah. And, and so what I found too, in doing the programs and projects, it's very, coming back to what Dirk said, because it's and Deming, right, is it's almost like, yeah, you can bring in a diagram, but it really has to speak the lang, it has to match the language of the culture or something. Because I find that, you know, you could depict it how you think it should be, but it doesn't fit. Right? Like what you're saying about these two different scientists versus engineers or whatever. They're going to, yeah, in, in business, like I think we're all focused in Deming, he's approaching. Although he's talking about Paul, uh, economics, new economics. What does he say? It's education and community as well, right? But it's basically, it's very hierarchical, right? It's industrial age is where we got to start from with most of these things.
Well, I, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that hierarchy is necessarily required. I actually, I'd say Deming is maybe in many places arguing that he is against hierarchy. He is talking about how the hierarchy doesn't give you any value in terms of understanding the people's relationships. And so the, the important part is the relationships between the people doing the work, right? That signing the names to the, to the graph, right? To the, to the flow. And that, and that the hierarchy doesn't give you any value there. But running a networked organization is just at odds with like trying to do performance reviews and how, who having a manager who you report to, right? And so then like, how do you organize everyone? Right? It, it makes the structures really complicated. And there's, I'm wondering if there is another interesting parallel there with, or I heard in if a Valve Corporation, they're making video games. But they published their employee handbook talking about how they sort of operate internally a bunch of years back. Um, and they, they basically, they, they have a graph, they have this like organizational chart. It's like the CEO of the company and like everybody else in like this kind of like giant mess, right?
That's kind of the way it should be, right? Like the, the top, the top of the chain, the hierarchy sets the aim of the system. And then everyone else should be doing, should be optimizing for that aim and not for their own specific goals. Like, you know, he talks about just that pyramid, right? The organization chart kind of encourages you to optimize for yourself and for, you know, for your manager, not for, not for who, like, you know, whatever is best for the, the company and the end aim of the system, you know?
Yep.
So I think, you ever heard of a concept called holocracy or system of management called holocracy?
No.
It's basically, everybody has a function, but that function is basically a tool in order to serve the aim of the company. And I think, um, I think it's, it's similar. of the company. And I think, um, I think it's, it's similar to what you said, there's a person at the top that defines what the end of the system is. And everybody else is in some morphous blob of stuff, each of them with maybe specific functions, but that's not what they do. That's not what they're assigned to do exclusively. They use that as a primary jumping off point in order to support the end of the cut company. So, um, when there's a, a problem with the customer, I think it was a shoe company that I read about, um, but if there's a, if ever a customer complaint comes in, who's, who's ever capable, it's not just a customer service representative that helps a customer, it's whoever is capable customer demand.
Was that Zappos?
Yes, that, that's, that's where I first read about the concept of holocracy and I try to when I ran my organization is saying, you know, I know your, your specific skillset is this, but your job is actually not to do that. I can hire anybody to do that all day long. Your job is to use that as your primary tool among other tools to help the customer. And to help the customer, you don't necessarily have to use that tool. If you can find other ways to do it, power to you. But I've had people come up to me and say, well, you know, I can help the customer, but really if I'm not using my tool, I don't want to do it. Well, no, you will, because your job is to help the customer. You're this, you're not the tool, you're the, you're the, you're, you're focusing the customer.
Yeah, right. My, in the, because of the type of role that I hold in most organizations, I've, I switched to viewing my role as that of catalyst. My job is to help other people do things, whatever it is. And I, I've been focused on that for like the last decade and change.
That's, that brings up the difference between teamwork in two kinds of organizations. There's an organization where everybody has a job to do and just does his job the best he can within those boundaries and forges ahead. That's called a me organization. I do what I'm supposed to do, the way I'm supposed to do it. And I'm not really all that active. And then, and there's a we organization where what you do is try to help, whatever you do, you're trying to help somebody else be able to contribute better to the aim of the system. So it's a, it's a different approach. The, the me versus we and in attempting to get a we organization, the, the hierarchy and the whole idea of the specific job descriptions, as you say, Yosha, yeah, you have a job description, but your duty is to help and make it easier for others in your system to do better. You see it on the soccer field and the basketball court all the time. Guys running around like crazy. Why? To make space for somebody else to be able to get a shot. They're trying to help the other guys. It's not each one of them. Although in the pro basketball game, maybe it's each one of them trying to score as many points as he can. I'm not sure.
Uh, I was gonna talk about that too, like, um, you know, you talk about baseball. You talk about the guy who, who does a sacrificial fly. His numbers don't look good at all, but he just helped his team win, win the game. So, you know, you look at certain such, and you know, if, if it were all based on like R D Is or metrics and stuff like that, I mean, there would never be a sacrificial fly.
Well, well, right, that's the, isn't that where the whole like Moneyball's, uh, sabermetrics approach building teams comes from? It's basically like, we're trying to like optimize on like getting on base. And that was all we care about, right? Right? Optimizing a direction.
Yeah, or, or understand the interactions between the different types of players that you have on, uh, you put up the.
So for a system like that, let's just, and it could be a baseball team or a project team, or I heard Yosho, your example was somebody who reported to you, right? You said, no, you're, so for that system, right? Wherever we put it, what are the prerequisites? Like what are the top three? Just to even be able to say those things and do those things. Do you know what I'm saying? To, to be able to.
For me to say it to my guys? To say, for me to say that to my team member?
Yeah. So that you, so what in the system allows that to ser- to, to be able to say it and to do it and survive? You know what I'm saying? Like, cause there are systems that won't allow it or they're beyond it, right? Obviously they're beyond it. You don't even need to say it. That's what they do. So I'm just trying to say, it sounds like the system you were all talking about, the example was kind of borderline, right? Like borderline, you had to nudge this person to do that. So I'm just trying to identify what are the top three system environment, things that you see that made it possible for you to say that and think that it, that, that is possible for this guy who was receiving what you said, that he could actually do it.
I think I have to convince him that. Well, first I had to convince him that he was not, just because he thinks he did a good job means that he did a good job. Really the ultimate decider if he did a good job or not was the customer. And right now the customer is disappointed. And he could sit there and point his finger at some other departments as well. I don't care. From my perspective or from the customer's perspective, they don't care if it's you or the guy in the other department over here that screwed up. All from the customer's perspective is that my company screwed up, our company screwed up. So if you want to salvage the reputation in this company, you will step outside your comfort zone or step away from your core responsibility to work with the other guys, figure out what's wrong and then deliver the right product to the customer. And I think you're right, in, in, I could have probably delivered that message in a real clumsy sort of way. It's a little bit better than when I'm doing that many years ago. But that's probably a couple of steps away from tripped out to HR if I didn't do it right. So, um, but you know, making, making a person aware that your job is not to sit there and push buttons on a computer program. I don't want you to be a code monkey, code jackie. I want you to be a person who does, who uses that as a tool to serve the customer. I always make the thing that, you know, when you see somebody building a house, you see somebody swinging a hammer. What's their job? Is their job to swing a hammer or build a house? You know, it's, there's a difference between a tool and a craftsman, you know? And if I can make that, if I can make that distinction clear that, hey, you're really good stress analyst or whatever your job title is. But also I expect you to be able to be a good problem solver on behalf of the customer's, uh, benefit. So, you know, don't sit there and say, your job is not to keep the finite element computer running all day long. Your job is to use that tool when necessary, but your job is solve the cus- customers' problems, whatever tools you need to use. And that may be one of them, but that can't be the only one. They're how Scott were that this.
I think so. You're just putting some color around the situation that you, for that, right? Sounds like you guys had a customer problem or you were focused on customer and you were.
I feel like underneath it's, there's a trust relationship there. In a, in a traditional hierarchical organization, you may not feel comfortable stepping out of your little area. Because if you go and help your neighbor, um, is that going to come back at me in my performance review in a year from this time where I am going to be marked negatively because I was spending so much time helping my neighbors. I did not necessarily complete my, whatever had been decided was my primary work. I feel, right? And, and those, those types of fears, right? Cause, cause a lot of these challenges, you can't be cooperative in an organization where you're being individually ranked or it's very difficult. And, and right at, when I was, I, I, I guess I was very lucky, my career, I've had a, a, a massive amount of autonomy in my role since I was first in my job, like my first internship job, I had an ungodly amount of autonomy. They just were like, here, there's a problem to solve. We have no idea. Good luck. Right? There's like, here, computer uses programming language in this library, figure it out. Um, but that's been very challenging in organizations, which were more rigidly hierarchical because I'm like helping my neighbors is why you hired me. And if you didn't want me to do that, you shouldn't have, you'd hire someone else. Who's gonna like follow instructions? Yeah, I, I washed out of organizations where I had that problem.
Yes, man, you're, you're, you're talking about what Deming calls the thing that's the tyranny of the current situation. Yeah. You, you can't do what the right thing is for fear of all kinds of stuff going on around, which shouldn't be going on around.
And, and this I think is what makes adopting Deming's principles so difficult, right? Um, we, I can't remember, this has, I'm sure this has come up a dozen times on the Deming Institute podcast. It comes up in his books, right? It's not like you can adopt three of the 14 points. You can only adopt all 14. There is, you might be able to focus on one or two, but you actually have to get all 14 a little bit in place before you can do any of it. And that's hard, so hard. I, I feel like, like at some level, you'd be better off like burning the organization down and starting over.
Well, you can, you can use the 14 points. Demi, in essence, with this book has given you the, the tool that allows those 14 points to show up. The theory behind the 14 points is a system of profound knowledge. And he says, you can use a system of profound knowledge, you know, that, that's, that's everywhere. And if you apply it to transforming an organization, you will get the 14 points. But he's offering you this view of the world and sharing this view with others is, is way bigger than just transforming organizations. It's about transforming the society around us, having us see the world differently. He, he caught, he calls, he, he, he calls it a transformation because we're moving from Newton's universe to a new universe that's very different from Newton's.
Yes, we're moving into Einstein's, uh, the God doesn't play dice universe.
Yes.
But he does. It's just very challenging, right? Uh, like moving from one place to another, right? I was listening to, right, I've, I've been on like a deep dive of like everything gaming lately, right? So, um, right on my like walks, I've been listening to, uh, Bill Bellows and, uh, John Willis talking about DevOpsy like things. Um, and, and they were talking about like, um, how Boeing had set up a, a basically a school site to, to like run training, but what they were teaching there was wrong from Bill's perspective. And I'm just like, so frustrating. That must've been frustrating, I think, for like, like you've got the resources, but you're like doing the wrong things with them. So.
Yeah. And the, in organizations where they, the trust that you talked about are not available, people won't talk about things to be able to make them better. So they, it's hard to, for them to get better. Uh, we've often talked about the, the taking an organization that already exists, even a, even an organization who, you know, 50 people or 5,000 is even is a huge organization com- in complexity. And transforming it from a, a prevailing style of management to a Deming company is a lot harder than starting a new company and using those principles all the way long. And there are challenges there too, because you have to spread those principles. You have to spread the principles as new people come in, because they're not familiar with those principles. They're familiar with all the ones that have been around them everywhere.
Yeah, um, in the Valve, oh no, I guess it was in an interview with someone who worked at Valve that I originally listened to. Um, they're talking about the Valve employee handbook. Um, one of the things that they mentioned that was very interesting was that, uh, Valve hired people very, very slowly because you couldn't absorb people into their process quickly. Because you had to essentially untrain them from working in a standard corporate environment. And so they'd, they'd only hire like, they'd try and keep like hiring to like under 50 people a year.
And their retention was pretty good.
Um, I, I don't know what, uh, what their retention looks like. Um, I haven't, uh, I think I'd only really be able to understand that if I worked there. Um, the one story I've heard about people washing out there was, was pretty brutal, but the way they dealt with it or at the sort of corporate level sounded pretty good. Um, they had a bunch of people working on an AR headset concept, an augmented reality headset concept. Um, and that didn't, um, that, that wasn't panning out. And they basically forced the people who were working on it and the whole team out of the organization, which sounds pretty awful. Um, but as compensation, Valve basically put the seed funding into their startup to spin it out into its own entity. So I like part, that sounds like it was good, but part of like, some of the stories around that sounded pretty, pretty like some of the internal culture, uh, and as described by these people who left, doesn't sound like it mash, meshes exactly with what the employee handbook says, for example. So like, I, I feel like it's very hard to like know how an organization works short of actually working there. Like, or being a researcher who's given access to a lot of information about like the internal function.
I was looking at, uh, with my English background, the definition that Deming uses for system. And, uh, and I looked at a lot of other definitions and most of the definition use the word element or component or parts in describing a system. And, and what I wanted is to develop a definition that doesn't use the word part or element in it. Cause that gets you to focus on the parts and the elements, damn it. So I, I got one that says it's like Demings, but instead of saying it's a system is a, a, a group of interdependent components. And I said, a system is a pattern of interdependencies established to achieve a purpose. So now you don't have the word part or component as part of the conversation. There's not a part or a component to improve. You want to improve something, improve the interdependencies.
Tim, do you have that written down somewhere?
Yeah, just, it's just in my book on top of Deming's definition, the system, I just put, I put pattern of interdependencies established to achieve a purpose.
That, that sounds a lot like the Matrana and Vareya Alpuisas like concept. So.
I might, I might've been prompted by either Donella Meadows or, uh, or Saint Peter Sangey too. I don't remember. I don't remember their definition specifically. I love, I love what Donella Meadows says about systems. We can't control systems. We can't understand systems, but we can learn to dance with them. And that's, that's part of what we've been talking about, that you have to be flexible. You have to dance. That, that's the only way to make things work the way they need to work. It's not about control. It's, it's not a dominance thing. It's about, it's about figuring out how to make things happen. And there are organizations that do very well with self-organizing, self-regulating teams. They don't have management overlooking them. They don't have that kind of structure. And they do fine.
Okay. So how do you find companies? Like, how do you identify like from the interviewee for a job position, whether a company is structured that way or not?
I can offer a couple ways, like, cause I was just talking to somebody. And, and it's the language, right? Like when I talk to, uh, and we forget this, but you guys are, you guys are right, probably on the, on the eight ball, a lot of this, but so when I listen and Bill, Bill Bellows and I talk about, because I listened to Bill, Bill too, when he talks in these groups, right? You listen to the words and you guys do it. I know, um, here, but like, for instance, examples. When I go to the current project that I'm on, you know, you know, you guys talked about this, like, if I put out the word collaboration, it lands like, almost like a, I don't want to say a violation, but it irks, it irks some people, right? Like, even just some basic words and integration, I know it pushes the envelope, which I want to do, but so to me, those words, and you see the, and body, right? It's hard to do if you're in a virtual meeting when nobody's sharing their video especially, but in person, you start picking up the cues. And then, again, it's, it's not one thing. And then, like, on another call I had on another project, these are big, big, uh, multi-year programs to build manufacturing facilities for medicine. Another guy, right out the gate, he's talking about integration, uh, collaboration, right? Those words, and he was putting them out there, and then I piggybacked off that. Um, so, and then I looked at his LinkedIn and he had other words what I didn't know about, but, you know, talking about allies and these kind of words, right, versus the parts. So I, I'll stop there, but I'm sharing that with you, because I do, I do hear that a lot. It, that's, and in some ways, it's kind of a burden or a curse, because, right? Then the we versus me, you hear those words, right? We talk about that, so I'll stop there and say, it shows up for me at least in the language, especially, you know, just the everyday words. So I, I'll stop there.
Those are like that corporate buzzword bingo words, you know? But what really happens is in a, in an organization where there's individual, sorry, Scott. In an organization that each group has their own objectives, that their compensation or bonuses are based on, why do I need to collaborate? I'm the design group, I get, I get, I get credit for releasing drawings on time. If I have to stop and talk to manufacturers, to asking if some of my design is manufacturable, that's going to slow me down. I'm not going to talk to them, screw that collaboration. And I'm going to get, I want to get minimum input from the analysis guys, because I don't want them to tell me that this thing's going to break. I have to release this drawing. And once I release it, I'm done, done my part, check my box, give me my bonus, thank you, I met my, my, um, objectives. So those are the things, you know, everybody can talk about collaboration and all the things like that, uh, synergy. But ultimately, once you get on the ground and say, by the way, you're going to be measured on this, you're going to be measured on that, you're going to be measured on some else. All that stuff falls apart, because all these collaboration things, what that does is slow you down. It might lead to a better product, but it slows down individual groups, so.
Yeah.
And it hurts.
The charts at the, um, at the end of the chapter kind of speak to that, those tables where it shows, like, you know, if, like, you know, area A is, has a minus area, that means area B has a plus, like that kind of thing, like, it's, it's almost like the company, the systems organized, the systems organization encourages the results that they get. Yeah, like it, like your side, like when you're incentivizing people's goals to be always a plus, then that's, then they're going to optimize towards that and not optimize towards what's the good of, uh, the total effect on the company, as, as he says, on the net effect on the company.
Another aspect of the tyranny.
The sacrificial flock, what do you, did you call it, Yoshio, this, if you do the sacrificial fly ball in baseball? That, right, if you, that's what I'm hearing Cole talk about. If you don't have a culture that looks at that, then everybody's out to hit the home run or, you know, it's close to it. And then, in the end, right, it's interesting, because I, I, even myself, I'm just thinking, wow, that, that's a, yeah, to get to a system like that, where people sacrifice, but they see it's not really a sac, right? You know what I mean? It's like, it's not really a sacrifice, it, it, from a different perspective, that system, because.
Because, because of the interdependency, that quote sacrifice turns out to be better for the whole organization. And as part of the organization, it's better for them.
Yeah, what difference does it make if you get a hit, get on base, but your team loses?
Well, but see, that's.
You got a, you got a L, but.
Exactly.
One less hit, but you're part of a winning team, take your pick.
Yeah, I guess it's easier to, because I think Deming's talking about that in the book, how, right, just talking about staying business. But the problem is business, like, with, it's easier analogy with a baseball game that has much more limited, right, at least for that one game. And then you have the season, right, where they have multiple games or a series. So it's a little bit easier to kind of see the boundaries, but.
What's the, what's the terminology, right? It's, um, uh, wicked problems versus, right, in game theory, there's a term for this, right? I read a, or listened to an episode of Econ Talk about this, I don't know, it must have been years ago at this point, but they were talking about how tennis is a much more simple environment than, like, business. As you're saying, business is, uh, right in it, I forget what the term, but the, they talk about, uh, the, the other one is a wicked problem. Let me see if I can find it.
Yeah, and you, Deming has an example somewhere, it's in the New Economics, where he's using the symphony. And, and he's saying business is even more complicated, like, coming back to what Dirk was saying about the flow. Like, the symphony, I know he, he, he has a diagram, I don't remember which chapter. It shows the complexity or maybe not, but you guys know what I'm talking about. He has businesses on the very more difficult than, uh, I don't know which, which ones he's showing.
Yeah, he has a level of, it's level of interdependence.
Yeah.
He has a bowling team, which is pretty low, because it's everybody adding up the scores. And then he has an orchestra and then he has a business.
Yeah. So the sports examples are great, because everybody likes it and it doesn't, but at the same time, in business, especially, right, even within businesses, there's different levels of complexity. But it isn't, especially now, I see with more and more inter, like, right, integrate, like, what do they call it? The, the, the internet of things is making it even more, but, uh, yeah, it's fascinating.
Yeah. Hey, Cole, you brought up, um, the, the four tables at the back of this chapter. Um, I'm going to just sort of throw this out to the, to the group here. I claim that there's a table missing.
Yeah.
Which, what table is that, then?
I'm not sure everybody's hearing you.
I think Cole was talking about a, the, a table in the.
Yeah, the four, four at the end of the chapter.
Yeah. I got, uh, second edition, so I may be a little out of sync with you guys, but this is talking about, you know, group A.
The figure, the figure number should be the same.
Yeah, table one, two, three, and four.
Yeah.
And it kind of goes through the evolution of, of, uh, you know, the new organization, where you're only worried about what's going to benefit your organization, that goes to the second table. And you start getting some awareness of, uh, uh, you're impacting other areas. And then you start looking at the, uh, effect, overall effect on the company. So I look at this, like, the first table is just, um, everybody plans and acts, plans and acts, that's all they do. The second one looks a little bit more like a PBSA cycle, it's a little bit more mature. But what I claim is missing is a table five, which, and question to you guys is, what does that table five look like? And this is a little bit related to what we've been talking about for the past half hour, so. I want to take up more time, then I'll just tell you what I'm thinking. So all the planning is done by individual departments. So each department plans, does, and the check part says, I'm going to check what my influence of my improvement proposal is on my adjacent organizations. That's good, but that's organization A. Do it, and then during the check phase, hey, how did I impact you guys, a little bad? How about in the, the, in the next table, the planning is actually done between organization A and organization D. Instead of waiting for the check cycle, or the, I'm sorry, study cycle to look for the negative positive impact, why don't you do that? At the very, why don't you start talking about the interactions at the very beginning in the plan cycle? Why isn't, why isn't the planning phase include, um, multiple organizations? And that's what my table five would look like in this book.
There's a technique, the Japanese technique called hoshin planning that takes that into account. They do hoshin planning and they do catchball. So the executives get together and say, this is how we think things need to go for all you guys. And then they hand it down, and the level below them that has to start executing it messes with it and says, oh, we can't do that, but here's what we can do. And they go back and forth, they take, they take a good quarter of the year doing that planning. So it, it's gone up and down, and there's general agreement. And then, if things don't go according to plan, it's not about who screwed up, it's about what didn't we understand?
Yeah.
Allowed us to plan this and say we could accomplish it. Something we missed, clearly, as a group.
Yeah, that's the study part.
So in the, in the software world, we have what I guess we call agile methodologies, like Scrum and Extreme Programming, a bunch of others, right? So it feels like they, instead of trying to go through and plan in advance, the idea is that you plan as you go and try and get feedback faster instead. But I'm not sure that that's, it, it has always felt like that doesn't necessi, right? We still try and do things like plan for the half a year or even a quarter, and it doesn't seem like our, our, like, micro detail, like, team part works quite with that sort of scale. Like, how do, how do you move between those? Like, how do you plan?
Dem, Deming talks about that, I think, in this chapter. He says, no success in the short term guarantees success in the long term. You can, you can have a lot of short-term gains and not get anywhere in the long term. And so you have to be careful that you don't get trapped into being satisfied over and over again in the short term.
Yeah, I guess. I, I, I like his, uh, discussion of monopoly, that was super amusing.
Yes.
We are.
It gets, that gets a lot of Americans upset.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you, when you can, you consider what we, what we lost when they broke up Ma Bell and eventually Bell Laboratories. We, we had an organization who was spending millions of dollars on research for the sake of research, even though it was Bell Labs. They weren't doing research on making telephones better. They were doing research projects where guys came in and proposed research projects. And the Bell guy said, yeah, that would be an interesting thing to learn. It was, it was science for the sake of science, not for any particular thing.
They invented the modern computer world at some level. Though, if you use an Apple laptop, you're using the direct descendant of Unix, which was invented there, right, for example.
But does it, like, does it only work to a point? So, like, at some point, does the monopoly characteristics? I found that that, this part of the chapter really interesting. Does at some point it start to hurt? You know, I mean, I, I can remember when, you know, before the breakup, where, you know, the telephone network was locked down, you couldn't add devices to it without AT&amp;T's permission, right? You had to, if you wanted, you had to call them and get, and tell them you're going to put a modem on the, you know, I'm old enough to remember that. You know, do you think that the same level of innovation we see now on the internet and so forth and, um, technology world would have existed had AT&amp;T stayed together?
And well, I, I don't think so, because, um, I think Deming had this assumption about the, the monopoly management being enlightened. And I don't think AT&amp;T would as an enlightened organization in that respect. Who? Oh, but, well, Bell Labs, a little piece of, well, Bell Labs is an entity was, but they were part of a large, of the larger AT&amp;T organization, which was not.
And part of what Deming's pointing out is, the reason that, that Bell overall could afford Bell Labs, spending all that money, not specifically on what's going on with Bell, was meeting their obligation as a monopoly. So Deming's not saying monopolies are good or bad, he's saying monopolies have an obligation. And they're in the best position, because they can spend a bunch of money on things that nobody else can, because they're busy spending money trying to survive. So he, he offers that, instead of break, the only, the only reason to break up a monopoly is it's not living up to its obligation to the future. And so.
So when we broke up AT&amp;T? So when we broke them up, were they, they were not living up to their obligation to the future, and so they had to be broken up?
I'm not sure they were not living up to their obligation to the future, I don't.
Well, I, well, I think, I think Cole would say they were not, right? Because you had to, basically, they'd, they'd put in place this permission structure, right? Where you had to ask permission to do anything. And that's not trusting their customers, right? They were, they were basically locking all their customers into the system as it was. So that, I would argue that that is, that was bad, and so they had no choice but to break them up.
What I, what I remember, what I remember way back, what I remember is.
Young.
What, what I remember way back is Bell Labs got broken up. We got a bunch of phone companies, so we had phones and phone companies. But we had, we had little money getting spent on the research that would make us all better off in the future. That's what Bell Labs was doing.
Well, where did?
Bell Labs since the early twenties did stuff just for the sake of learning. And that learning, they would share with whoever wanted it. And some of the times, the learning helped the phone system, and at other times, it had nothing to do with phone systems and helped somebody else. And that is gone.
Yeah, I, there's a fascinating book about, uh, research structures, what Donald Stokes Pasture Squadron. That was very interesting from this, this topic.
I mean, the other, um, the other example he points out is De Beers, which, right, is. Which, you know, I, 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 I don't think we could argue that, that, that they've had a, a negative effect on the diamond industry in the world. But I, I guess, like, at his, when he wrote that, maybe it wasn't, maybe it wasn't the case, I don't, I don't know.
How, how big was the, uh, blood diamond trade in, in nineteen ninety something? I think it's already pretty bad at that point.
The people, the people who were close with Deming were not thrilled with the De Beers example. Because, and it, and it, and I, I believe it, it doesn't have to do. Deming's point with the De Beers thing is, the price of diamonds didn't, didn't, has been stable. It hasn't, oh, we've got control, diamonds are going, we're going to charge hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, uh, a carat for diamonds. So that was his point, but I'm not sure Deming took into account a bunch of things that, uh, they did to, in order to mine the diamonds, but.
Well, right, it, it, right, it just goes back to our, where you draw the boundaries of the system, right?
Yeah. But his idea, his concept is that the benefit to a monopoly is that they don't have to worry about survival in the moment, so they can spend money on the future. And if they're spending money on the future, then why would you want to break them up in order to have cheaper phone rates? Um, okay, the phone, you're not paying as much on the phone, yeah, and you're not, you're not getting all these advanced discoveries that are helping people and health, helping people in all kinds of places. There's no money getting spent that way, because those little phone companies can't afford to spend money on that.
Well, right, and having the, all the tiny phone companies is a bunch of duplication of effort, right? When, right, when you have a merger of two large companies, you often fire a bunch of the support staff. That maybe isn't the right thing to do, but that's how the organization essentially gets the efficiency gains of bigger and bigger, right? I'm not sure that that's the right approach, though. So. But that's how, that, that's how it works currently.
But any, any publicly traded organization in the United States, if you look at their mission statement, within the first sentence, they're. If you look at their mission statement, within the first sentence or in the seconds, within the first two sentences, there's always enhanced shareholder value. If that's the aim of the organization, then the people who actually use the telephones, where do they show up? In the name of the corporation, they're not in there. They're there to enhance shareholder value. I'll bet you look at any.
I feel like that there's a Deming thing related to this, right? Doesn't he, he talks about this, about how the. Yeah, but the goal being that the organization needs to be focused on its continuity over time and not the value to shareholders or something like that.
Constancy of purpose for its aim.
Yeah, but if the aim is to have shareholder value.
Well, then lay off all the people and just cash out, right?
And you know that those, those mission statements are. I know what you mean, Yoshio, cause I think there's different layers to that because they say that. We see it, but I think somebody else said it may be Deming. Or, or it was Akoff in the end. They're doing that so they could enhance. Their lifestyle, right? And everybody who's supporting that, it, right? Because frankly, I s- I see what goes on. All the games they play. And if you really look, again, different people, different accountants can say, but there's a lot of. Like accounting, what do they call it? The one place, one department, you don't want creative people as in accounting. But I, I see, I see some of these projects that the way they work with the, the, you know, they. I don't wanna go too far, but it's definitely borderline at best. What they make, just to make it look good, boosting, right? With the perception, then the people, at least at the top. Get bonuses or whatever, but it's, it's, I think it's a hollow value for. Maybe this comes back to the monopoly. What is, or who else is that? He's another Japanese, uh, the T- Toguchi, right? Like they're thinking value for the, not. Exactly. So I think that's what Deming and what, what they're, right? The system boundaries are much bigger. If you really look at the value judgment, and you can even say, what's the value judgment of that? Bigger system, but you know, to justify him and not, and, and frankly, I would say to justify uh, oligarchy or right, uh, kingship. Right? How much? Right? Uh, I, I think what's the actual value versus what we call it? I don't know.
Well, right, a benevolent dictatorship would be really nice. Unfortunately, it doesn't usually work out that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you eliminate greed from the, from the algorithm, then, right, you could have a companies that optimize. Or take into account society into the, into their view of a system, right? And then you could, and then like. You could enable more cooperation between competition, right? Which like, he has some. Really good examples in here of like where cooper- competitors cooperating does benefit society, like for example, like. Everybody using the same rail gauge, right? It wouldn't be possible to have a nationwide rail network, right? If everybody had different gauges of. Of rail. Um, and you know, we see in IT world, right? It happens all the time. We see. Standards that get adopted and, and make, and really unlock innovation, right? And then we also, but we also see standards that everybody creates their own standard. And now we have fifty standards, which is. You know, why we have like, you know, the electronic health record and now I have twenty different apps on my phone with. Twenty different electronic health records, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like his, I like his uh, homey example of the. The uh, two filling stations, gasoline stations in his neighborhood who share. They each have one truck, repair truck or tow truck. And if, if there's a call and. And, and your truck's busy, if, if the other guy's is not busy, he'll let you use it to. Answer that call. So they get, they share that and then they share, they open different nights. During the week, so people know in that neighborhood where to get gas. Doesn't matter who's open, cause they're splitting the time. One's open one night, one's open the next night. So there's many. Miniature examples, micro examples of cooperation. That allow a benefit to a, to a large audience.
Yeah, like Yoshio was saying, like he was in, I'm just thinking like, it's almost like. That was a mini example, right? Where you were encouraged, your employee to focus on the customer. And the customer and that system that you would create those. Patterns or behaviors that, that right would, would help the larger system, right? Um, but. Yeah, it's so hard, it's hard to do because the way things just are structured for, for not. Thinking out that bigger system.
The SEC isn't a big help.
Well, yeah, the game, well, that's just, yeah, the game we play, I don't know. I think it's deeper than that. There's some, some way like you guys. When you first said monopoly, Ben, Benjamin, I thought you were talking about the Parker Brothers game, which is an iconic. You think about it, look at it, you play it. I played it as a kid. It's like the quintessential American game. So. There's something in the society that just, it, it, we play, this is a game, but it's, it's, it's like. A life or death.
Right, we have, we have, that is our, we have a fundamental competition mindset. I wanna say they talk about this extensively in. Uh, what George Lakoff's uh, metaphors we live by talks about this extensively, right? He talks about how. Um, the US mindset is like metaphors about war and competition and fighting and like, um. And, and we have, and because we have all grown up, or those of us who were born here and have lived here our whole lives. Um, you grew up immersed in these, this collection of metaphors and it is essentially warped how you see the world. And getting outside of that is very hard, very.
Yes. Everything's a competition. And I like, I like a lot of Alfie Cone's work, punished by rewards, uh, schools are children deserve, um. Uh, was the, the case against competition he's got.
Yeah, the schools are children deserve are, um, is on my like to read list.
He talks, he talks about something I think is amazing that, that is not common in, in America. He says, I can knit a sweater and feel good about it without comparing it to any sweater somebody else knitted. We don't believe that. We gotta, my sweater's better than his. And if it's not, I gotta go back and do something to make my sweater better.
We have to rank everyone's sweater.
Exactly.
And if you fail to produce a sweater, then you're, you're, you're lost.
Yeah, it's even worse. Yeah, there's certainly a lot with perspectives and including trust. Yeah, which I think is sadly lacking in a whole bunch of organizations. Even, even in not-for-profit organizations and one time I was thinking. That a whole bunch of what goes on is driven by the fact that these are, these are for-profit companies and some of them are. Publicly traded, so that's a big deal. And certainly that has an influence and probably a bad influence. But I'm talking to people who worked, I remember talking to one guy who worked at Goodwill. I said, wow. We got a guy working here at Goodwill and we do all this rating and ranking of people and having different divisions compete against each other. Why don't you share what you guys do? Cause you don't have to do that. And he says, no, we do exactly that. Okay. I think it's, I th- I think, I, I think you, you, you're on to something. There's something very. At least American, it might even be Western culture about it. There, it's just, there, there's, it's there. And I, I don't know. I like competition when I'm playing sports and I wanna win, but I don't play the game. I don't, my, my reason for playing the game isn't winning. My reason for playing the game is having fun. I often have more fun when I win, but sometimes I have a lot of fun even when I lose. The point is playing the game. The point is not winning. But what we've got trapped into is the point of the game, the point of everything you do in life is winning.
It's what you're winning because like you, Deming in the book and others, right? It's what game, what, what sys- what game? What are the rules of the game? What does everyone agree? Because game is fun. It's, and then. I've played the game in the corporate world and different, and I feel like lucky or it was almost an accident where I was able to. See some of these things, right? We're talking about some teams and groups that. It was about the sacrificial pinch hit, right? There was something about that culture where you could, you could have it. And that was a winning, right? I felt like those teams were unstoppable, right? Like there's, and that, that by itself. Creates like when you're a part of an unstoppable team. And I don't mean, like, I mean. You feel with this team, whatever happens, right? We're, we're, we're all gonna, we're gonna figure this out. Or right, even if it's disaster, it's all goo- good, cause I'm going down with my brothers and sisters, right? It's, it's that. That's a game to me that is just, it, it's a, it's a game and it can be fun and it can be serious, but it's not. It's not the, yeah, the game like we're saying where there's the winners and losers. It just, it seems very petty to me. I don't know. But it's petty to go for the cash and yourself, you know, I got my nice house and, you know, and my maids or whatever and then. But shit, you know, everything else is like, I don't.
Demi, Demi, Demi tries to point out that, that the whole idea in an, in an economy. Is it's not a zero-sum game. And we're playing it as if it's a, a football or baseball game where there's only one winner. There's not, you, you can cooperate and the cooperation leads to both of you being better off like the two gas stations.
Yeah, but why would you wanna do that when you could have all the customers and there'd be only one gas station?
You'd have fewer customers.
Isn't that a monopoly example where, where we're saying monopolies? And I, I hate to derail it, but to me. So and Deming, so I, I would offer that there is ways and there's no one system. But maybe it's what the aim of that system is, is that purpose to put everybody out of business just for greed. Somebody used the word greed. Versus this is, and you can have some greed, let's face it, we're all a little bit, but are they also have, does the. Does the benefit to the larger system of society or how far you go outweigh the, the, the small greed of, you know?
The, 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 the challenge is to convince the, those people who are looking at. Me, 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 that they would be better off if they cooperated with the rest of us.
Yeah, that's very.
And that's a hard sell.
Well, right, this is, this is why we got rid of our uh, ninety percent marginal tax rate, right? It used to force. Right? Having a high marginal tax rate would basically force you to leave your money in your company if you wanted to amass wealth. Because if you took it out as income, suddenly you're taxed ninety percent, right? And then we undid that and then all hell broke loose. I don't know.
I think we see a lot of uh. Symptoms of that behavior of me versus we, whether we all win together in the system of transportation. Driving to win, driving for my benefit at the cost of everybody else on the road. And the amount of time, at least in the United States, I think many of us spend in our cars. In the system of transportation. And it's right in front of us. It's physical. It's observable. It's repetitive. We see it all the time. And as a culture, we still can't figure out that it's the we versus me, the drive. Driving to win versus all of us trying to get somewhere collectively for all of our benefit. To me, it's an amazing example of our inability to understand those concepts.
Yeah, the, the zipper merge, right, is a perfect example. Everybody like, no, I'm not letting that person. Get in, but, but everybody would get there faster if, if everybody let one.
Right, yep. So uh, some of the things we're talking about, I, I, uh, when I used to have to commute an hour each way. I spent a lot of time observing and thinking about the examples that were right in front of me, right in front of all of us. And we can't figure it out.
In fact, in fact, politically, we have trouble with it. What we do in Los Angeles, whenever there's. A freeway that gets kinda crowded up, we add lanes. When you add lanes, you generate traffic, you don't. Generating more traffic, what the hell?
More people drive because they think their commute, their, their. Their destination will be faster, so they drive more.
I, I, I was a weird freak and I didn't start driving until I was in my thirties and I used the LA public transit system for decades. Um, and what was very frustrating to me is that, um, it always felt like we, it would start getting to a point where it's like, oh. Ridership is going pretty good and then they'd get into some kind of union dispute and shut down and then everyone goes back to driving again. And then it takes another decade or two for ridership to get back up. And we just kept doing loops of that over and over and over.
Yeah, New York, New York City built many bridges over the years and. Every time they added a new bridge, they ended up with an, one more bridge that was uh, jammed up.
Well, uh, right, New, New York couldn't function without its public transit system. I, it just wouldn't, you just can't have a. Density like that without it. Um, but I worry that like, oh, we're gonna stick all these self-driving cars into the system now. And then, and then the, and then it'll just be gridlocked, but maybe they'll force people back to the subway and then the subway will be able to support functioning again.
Yeah, I think self-driving cars might drive more as a we than as a me.
Maybe.
It will. I mean. Driving cars actually talk to each other, you will have. Better cooperation amongst cars instead of having the human, you know, I gotta be.
I would be surprised if a Waymo taxi behaved in a way that for its. Um, you know, the uh, aggressive behavior or risky behavior or behavior and such that it was not. Um, taking all the inputs around it and trying to make good decisions, but.
Well, what, but, but what's gonna be bad is that the Waymo taxi and the Uber self-driving taxi and the whatever, I cruise and. None of them are gonna talk to each other. So you will have four vehicles all competing for the one rider. So it'll be like a livery cab service in New York.
Current state, but I bet in the future they will have um, communication between cars.
Hasn't, hasn't the. I thought the NTSB has been trying to work on a car communication standard for like inter-vehicle communication standard for a couple of days.
My, my idea would be, maybe this is going down a rabbit hole, but. Among cars. I'm driving in a self-driving car, I'm gonna go out, my car's gonna go out there and ping all the cars around me and find out which one they're self-driving, which one they're human-driven. And then I can predict the behavior of the self-driving cars. And I, so I can have. It's, you know, a human-driving car can't tailgate because the human system is kinda like, the brain is about a two-hertz system as far as reaction time go. Uh, automated system has much higher response time, so tailgating is possible. So when the light turns green. A whole line of self-driving cars will take off all at the same time and they'll sit, sit on each other's bumpers. Until it gets the next red light, they'll all slow down. Uh, density of traffic much tighter, but more efficient without the chance of accidents happening. But now if you see, if the IFF system identified the human driver doesn't.
Yeah, the, yeah, um, right, in a world of all self-driving cars, you don't need to have signals except for to allow pedestrians to get across. In which case you might move to a system where you put pedestrians separate from vehicles. The problem is, is that like, if you now have to detour out of the way, do you have a bridge or a tunnel? And a bridge or a tunnel is a difficult thing to navigate if you're. Uh, if you have mobility issues. And so now you have a whole different set of challenges because.
Wait till we get, wait till we get to the flying cars and have them be self-driving.
In three dimensions.
We can't even avoid each other in two dimensions.
I'm gonna take the conversation back a few minutes, if that's okay. I know. I'm gonna take the conversation back a few minutes, if that's okay?
Sure.
Competition and monopolies, um, General Motors and, uh, GM, uh, Ford and, and all these companies are always in competition. Did we lose our host?
We did.
I'm gonna ask him a question. Um, I'm sorry, so all, all the Western automakers are always in competition with each other. And I'm gonna say, uh, Toyota really isn't in competition. When they became the number one auto manufacturer in the world, they didn't celebrate. Because they were never, they never saw themselves in competition with any other car company, right?
Yeah.
But the, but the question I'm gonna put out there is, who is Toyota in competition with? And there is an answer. The answer is the, the Toyota of yesterday. Are we better than we were yesterday? And that's how they think. So, and then, and then to you, Tim. Um, you said something about winning is fun, but winning against a really shitty team, excuse my French. Um, winning against a lousy team, is that satisfying? Is that more satisfying than losing to a really good team?
Yeah, this is, satisfaction is playing.
Yeah, and actually playing better than you did yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could lose to a better team and you still feel pretty good about it, because they helped you improve your game.
Yep, I, I've had my game improved a lot.
Good.
I, I had, yeah, when I played in college, I was one of three American-born players and I was playing defense on the left side and the coach wouldn't let me cross midfield. He thought, thought it was a bad thing to do for a defender. And I'd see, you know, thirty yards of green in front of me and wondering why he wouldn't let me dribble up there and pass the ball. He had his view of the game. Well, we're, we've hit the time mark. We can keep going if we've got something to go on. Anything from the first two chapters we wanna talk about? We forgot to, forgot to hit, or even this chapter, chapter three.
I, I was still interested, maybe we'll save this for next time. Um, right, he, uh, Deming was very influential in Japan and he talks about Japan a lot. Um, and it is very interesting that, like, it feels like many, like, Japanese companies are not like, or the Japanese economy is maybe, uh, from the Western appearance is not doing well. But maybe that's because we're not understanding and they're actually further down the Deming path than we realize. And so where we, our ability to assess them is like wrong.
They, they, as a group, in the fifties, when Deming was working with them and, and as time went on, I, I don't know how much it changed. The way, right here, I, I'm not sure it changed much. They weren't looking at the system, when Deming talks about a system, as any one of those companies. They were looking at Japan as the system. And, and they have, those companies have a way of interacting and working with each other in a cooperative manner that's way different from what goes on here.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe what, what the West seems to view as the stagnation of Japan is actually not what we think we're seeing. And that's, that's something I'm curious about, but I haven't had time to dig into yet.
Maybe it's reached a healthy level of stasis. You know, I think
Maybe.
What the stock market demands of American companies is year-over-year growth.
Right.
Seven percent year-over-year growth, no matter what. And Japanese companies, maybe once they reach a stable situation where they have a sustainable customer or sustainable manufacturing that can meet the needs of the society, and society no longer needs anymore, then you're not gonna grow, but you're healthy. You know, things that could control, that grow uncontrollably against, uh, demand that doesn't exist, come out of cancer. So I look at, I look at companies that are demanded to go seven percent year-over-year growth and I said, why? What's the customer demand that says, well, the customer in this case is the shareholders. They're pushing.
Yeah, Akoff talks about that. You, you, you mentioned growth and he said, garbage heaps grow. They don't develop. What companies need to be doing is develop.
Yeah.
And you might be continuing develop, to develop without growing.
Yeah.
It's not a requirement to grow.
Yeah, you can define your product.
Yeah, you, you, you expand in your product. You have new, different products, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't have to be growth, it's development.
I used that phrase at a local township meeting be- because of the growth of, uh, the sprawl, the urban sprawl, the growth. And I challenged the township as to whether it was development or growth. And I used that like a lead balloon. It didn't matter. It didn't make any impact. We continue to call it development. Um, and it's, it's not development, it's growth. Anyway.
Yes. We're bigger for the sake of being bigger.
Yeah. What's the distinction? And what, what's that? Just, I'm just curious, right? I could put in my own, but I'm curious, uh, growth, development. I'm hearing you say there's, there, at least from your perspective in the co- in the Deming, like this context, and, and also your context with the community trying to influence them. What's the, what's the key distinction between the two?
Uh, and it was, I believe, it wasn't at Akoff as opposed to Deming, but growth is size. Development is inability or accomplishment. Uh, so a, a garbage pile will grow, but it won't develop. Um, so development is advancement of a, ability.
Yeah, quality, ability, infrastructure.
So what I'm hearing is, cause like a tree grows.
Yep.
Right. Well, what I'm, I think what I'm hearing is a little bit more subtle. It's like a garbage heap is pretty negative. So I'm thinking it's, and, and it, and it piles up, but it's just more of a, it, it doesn't serve that community value. There's, there's some intent missed. There's something missing.
And trees, trees, trees don't continue to pile up. They get next to each other and they reach a, a, a homostasis kind of a thing with other trees. Sometimes the same kind of tree, some kind of different tree. So the forest develops and the individual tree develops some, some new branches here and there. But at a certain point, it, it, it's growth is mostly in, in breadth. The, the trunk gets bigger and bigger. It doesn't keep growing and growing and growing and growing. It's about developing to fit in with whatever's going on around the rest of the, uh, the infrastr-. And the, the rest, the rest of the, the content. So it's, and an interesting thing is, we, we, we think when a forest burns down, that the, the, the strongest trees grow back first. It's not the strongest ones that come back first. It's the ones that can take advantage the quickest to come back first. So it's not a resilience of the ones that burned down. It's the, the, that regrows the forest. It's, it's the seeds that get spread like when a, when a, when a sequoia burn, burns and its seeds fall out, that, that fire feeds the, 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 uh, spawning of new trees. And it's, it's a whole different mechanism for what happens. So, and, and, uh, Russ was adamant about, um, development having to do with quality of product, quality of life, service to the rest of the world, uh, to society. And that, and that growth, you might be growing while you're doing that. But growth is a measure of nothing in particular useful as far as he was concerned. Okay, you're bigger, which might mean you're polluting the world worse than you were before. You may or may not have developed. But he didn't, he didn't see trying to measure growth as something useful or of value. He did see
If you add the growth, it's easy to measure.
Well, great conversation, everyone. I'm, I'm a couple hours, I'm in the Midwest, so I'm gonna
In response to the growth versus development, I believe Akoff did a book, I was just looking for it, called F Laws, meaning flaws. And it was, each concept was one or two pages. One of them was growth versus development. And it was a very easy book to read in terms of short ideas. Obviously, it can spawn lots of thinking and maybe not necessarily be easy. But it was F, F laws of management, I think. F dash laws of management. I can't find it.
It's Akoff's book and that, those, those might be fucking laws.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lay on
So, right, exactly. And one of them was growth versus development. So if you wanna dig into that and some other really spectacular concepts, some aha moments besides this growth versus development, that book, but I, I was gonna hold it up in the camera, but I can't find it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyway, have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks a lot. Thanks, Tim for hosting.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
See you next week.
Night, everyone.
Ciao.
Bye-bye.